Found a no bill, it's over. That's not adequate today. So first off, I made the decision to make the decision about to charge myself. Not my favorite decision, but I think it was the right thing to do and I'm pleased to see that Ramsey County Attorney Choi and Dakota County Attorney Backshem are following our lead. I think the use of grand juries on police cases is over. Secondly, when I made the decision, on our website at the same day went up, my full forty-seven page statement about why, a sixty-page report on the facts, all the police reports, all the forensics, the autopsy, and all the videos. It went up at the same time I was speaking. And the page generally got eight thousand hits in the first four days and some thirty thousand hits on the videos. The videos in the Jamar Clark case were not conclusive in any way. And that's the terrible challenge for criminal justice system with videos. In many ways, we'd like to release the videos immediately, particularly if they very clearly show what happened, which as you know, if you looked at them, isn't the case in Jamar Clark. We'd like to have that, but if we're going to use that video in a prosecution of a case before a court of law, we cannot. We simply cannot. Case law and statute law and Supreme Court determination says we can't. Now, my colleagues across the country have used them when clearly the video shows that the police officer acted appropriately, instead of waiting through that whole process of evaluating. And sometimes you do. Dan Conley, my friend to the DA in Boston, has done that twice in the last three years, and I think properly so. And I would be tempted to do that if we have that clearer case here. But normally, we cannot do that. Otherwise, we cannot assure that the police officer will receive a fair trial if in fact they're charged for the crime. So let me conclude by saying, your police chief, with your help, has done a lot of good training with her officers. They had a long way to go, just like prosecutors have a long way to go. I took the lead from a police chief who had already had her officers go through implicit bias and six months ago had everyone in my staff go through that. It's very good training. I think it's useful and we continue to do those things. Members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity. I hope I haven't invaded your time too much. Thank you.
Thank you. So I know that we do have some questions or comments, and I think maybe I'll just start this way and continue if that's all right. So Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I'll be really brief. I just wanted you to introduce the third generation of Christensen's who are now working in your office. Mike Christensen, our CPED director, his son now works in the county attorney's office. I was hoping you could introduce him.
Will Christensen is responsible for parts of the speech, and he's pretty good. You know, as I say about folks who make reference to my son, he's not quite as smart as his grandfather, but he's better looking than his father. There's no question that Will is both smarter and better looking than his father.
To be fair, Madam Chair, third generation public servant, his grandfather, father, and now Will, working in the county attorney's office. It's pretty amazing.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Kenny Attorney Freeman, you had talked about prosecuting MPD officers and talked about this situation where there may be a cozy relationship between, let's say, a police officer and/or deputy chief and your office. And in those situations where there might be a conflict of interest, I mean, could you just, you know, explain to the general public, I mean, what typically happens?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang, we've had a conflict policy in our office and most prosecutors do, and we trade conflicts. I have gotten several cases from County Attorney Choi and Ramsey. One was a priest case in which the priest had been County Attorney Choi's priest. I wouldn't want to prosecute a case of one of the pastors of the church I go to, that kind of personal relationship. And most of us are very close about that. I mean, that's why, God forbid, if one of you all case, I wouldn't. I work with you. But, you know, Minneapolis Police have some nine hundred sworn officers, and so many of those sworn officers are unknown to me or majority of people in the office. And ultimately, I make the decision in cases. Now, I delegate that in a lot, but trust me, any police case, I make the call. And if I believe I know that officer or who it is, I will send it out. And if the prosecutor is signed to it as a relationship, we'll find a new prosecutor within the office. But I don't want to send all my tough cases elsewhere. There's some people who've suggested that all police cases should be sent out. Okay? Well, I send all of my, where do I send them? I give them to Choi in Ramsey County? That's kind of not fair. Okay, so then I send them to all the other seven metro county and I take theirs, and that's about equal in number. And I was elected to do this job. I appear before you, although you don't set my salary like the county board does, but I listen to you and I'm here. And I get, just like the good council member who represents me, you know, we get inquiries at home and elsewhere, just like you do. I think it's important that people be able to look me in the eye. They're not going to go, no, Pete Orpitt in Washington County, notwithstanding he's a great county attorney. So I think I want to keep all the cases I can. If there's a conflict where in which we feel uncomfortable doing it, or frankly, others do, we will usually send it away, but not just kind of a broad brush because, you know, local control and account of local accountability is an important concept in our response to the people. At least, that's how I feel.
And, you know, when you say that, you know, when a case is maybe too close and there's a conflict of interest and you farm it out, I mean, you know, you had mentioned earlier that it's pretty evenly spread across the seven county metro. Is that correct?
Yes, it will be. And when we send it out, that means we wash our hands of it. We have no further contact in the case. Now, the case will still be tried here, and the Ramsey, Assistant Ramsey County Attorney who's assigned the case will come here and sign it. If the judge feels too close, the judge can recuse it as well. And, you know, I think all of us are more sensitive about it than we used to be. But I, we also, and we've talked about it, my fellow county attorney brothers and sisters have talked about it a lot, but I'm kind of the old school, I think I should be accountable for all the cases that are not significant conflicts.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Freeman, I just, again, want to thank you for your work on and help with the taking these gun crimes seriously. And, you know, as you pointed out, I've spent my time, you know, trying to advocate for that, and I think there isn't anything right now in the community that I represent that has people more upset than people shooting at each other. And, you know, I was just talking to the chief the other day and looking back at that history again, where our violent crime is down, and, you know, having lived in this community when it was really hot, much higher, and I think to myself, well, what's the difference? Because I feel, you know, that there's just, there's angst that people have about, particularly about people shooting at each other. And she pointed out that there probably are way more guns on the street now than there were in the nineteen eighties, and that also, social media has made us aware of everything that's going on, which gave me a little bit of comfort. But I do think it is, that is the thing that's got people really upset in my neck of the woods. The other thing that I am curious about, and if Mr. Christensen is your communications person, I think sometimes we don't tell the story enough about the successes that we've had. And so, you know, when you put out a press release about a particular case that's been resolved, I appreciate that. And I think that's the other thing that citizens really want to know. What's the outcome then, when there's a crime committed, someone is arrested, and, you know, it could take a while, but they appreciate hearing. Just the other day, there was the sentence that was given to the young man involved in the killing of the three-year-old on the corner of Penn and Lowry. Now, it wasn't what we all had hoped for, but it certainly was a resolution. And so, I think Mr. Janney did that story, but people really want to hear what the outcome is, and so, any way that you can oomph up that message to the public about the outcomes, because it is, you know, sometimes it's a long time from when it happened to resolution. And people forget, but they still have that question in their mind. And so, I think that's helpful. The other thing I want to thank you for, and Councilmember Glidden reminded me of this, but your office has been working really hard with us on nuisance properties. And Gail Baez is just a fantastic person to work with. That's a real challenge, again, in the community that I represent. And so, that coordinated effort, and boy, we have everybody at the table there, you know, including tax-deferented people, the property people at the county, and our city staff and regulatory services. And it makes a difference and helps us solve these problems that are, you know, so troublesome to neighbors. So I want to thank you for that work, too. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Council President Johnson, thank you. Yeah, guns have not gotten better. There are more on the street, it's clear. I've been kind of excited hearing some gun shops around here are having more difficulty with law enforcement and, I think, appropriately. So it's all of our work to do. When I first became county attorney, as you know, we collected over six thousand guns in one weekend in our gun back, and I thought that might make a little difference. I'm not sure it really did. But what we can do is to make sure that people know that we're going to prosecute them. And Minneapolis cops are plenty tough on them, too. They don't like to have those guns out there, so they're helpful. As far as outcomes, I think that's a good suggestion. Sometimes the buzz is around when the crime first occurs and when it's charged, and under the rules, and I file them very carefully, I can only speak about a case when we charge it and when it's over. And I don't. And other prosecutors around the country who couldn't resist talking in the middle of a case get in trouble. And I think that's one of the things we have to do. Let me just say about nuisance properties, and I've talked with you all before, but the news, because we're using nuisance properties downtown. We've now got three properties, which the owner simply isn't enforcing drunkenness, prostitution, drugs, and everything. And so now, we work with the city's regulatory folks, and if they're not responding there, then we send them a letter, and usually, it's a draft. Here are the following ninety-two violations in the last year. You are responsible for your property. We're giving you thirty days to come up with a plan to change that, or we'll initiate an action in court to take your property away from you. Somehow, that gets folks' attention. And it's really great to see the owner say, geez, I didn't know that was happening. Come on, you own the building, and actually, you've been there sometimes when these things have occurred. But we've gotten some progress with those. There are three pending now and one moving forward. And sometimes, all it takes is, here's the draft letter that we're going to file in court if we don't get some satisfaction. So that's been kind of fun and exciting because it was really, originally nuisance properties for the bad property in the neighborhood, and we really appreciate. It takes the cops a lot of time to put these together with us. And, you know, normally, they say, hey, my job's to stop the burglaries and the rapes and the homicides. I think they really understand a bigger picture of their job, and that's very helpful. Thank you for your comments, Council President.
And Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I wanted to pile on some of the thanks to and gratitude to you and your office for your involvement here. I think a partnership with Hennepin County's office is just crucial. I have an opportunity to have worked with you on youth coordinating board extensively. Really appreciate your participation in there, also our efforts at youth violence prevention. The more we do together, I think the better it benefits everybody. I also appreciate your strong stance on gun control and many of the other issues that the council president brought up. I think that our hands are kind of tied by the state at the city level because they won't let us try new things and new ideas or change some of the state laws, too, to make it, we maybe have, make more of a dent on the gun violence that's really a serious problem, very serious in our city. Also, I just wanted to acknowledge the transparency with which you dealt with the Jamar Clark incident. I didn't envy you, I don't think any of us did, with what you had to do. You took the responsibility very seriously and really appreciated what you made available to the public. And I had a couple of things I'd appreciate your comments on. You talked a little bit about upticks in crime, and you talked a little bit about opioids and overdoses. We, time and again, are looking at sex trafficking in the city of Minneapolis, and there are big concerns about what a hub it is, we're the largest city in the region, and there's, I guess, some uncertainty about if it's getting worse, if we're getting more awareness, if we're making any progress, and I wonder if you have any thoughts on that from your position.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, you know, the sex trafficking thing is just awkward and awful, particularly sex trafficking in juveniles. The system was not very well set up for years. Too often, the young women, particularly those in their teenage years, were not voluntarily in this business. They were forced into it, and the system couldn't quite figure out whether they were criminals or victims. I think we have made a clear decision, the legislature, but frankly, led by county attorneys, and let me give John Choi Ramsey, he really took the lead. No wrong door. And so, the young women who are forced into this business or get into this business are now treated as victims, and we really deal and work with them. We go instead and try to figure out who are the people that are running and doing the business. Pete Orpitt out in Washington County is very aggressive. He's got a designated prosecutor and an investigator with his group. We have done some of that, although our volume is such that it would overtake one person. We have several people doing it. Commissioner Green has helped us with an additional person, and we're in the process of designating kind of the head of that sex exploitation team, and that person will be named in the next two weeks, which will be full-time. And we'll also have several other members on his or her team to work on this. So we're aware of it, and I think, you know, a little bit about more transparency, we're learning, and we recognize it's a real problem. And people who just say, well, all of this is just about the Super Bowl, that's garbage. You know, there may be more sex trafficking overall at Super Bowl time, but it's not by young women. That's when the pros come in, and we're not going to permit that either. But our focus really is trying to help the young victims, and they are victims in this business. You know, it's a different mindset for us. The criminal justice system sometimes moves kind of slowly. I think we understand. I think cops are doing a good job. Got some great Minneapolis cops who focus on this. So I think we're making progress. We got a lot of work to do.
I appreciate that, and I know that we've got a lot of work to do at the city, too, but we're coordinating better and better now with other jurisdictions, and I think that really helps, too. There's kind of a social media aspect to this that I don't really understand, but I think that some of our investigators, it's really helped get to the bottom.
Madam Chair, if I could just, one last point. I want to say, in the last couple of years, that your prosecutors across the board have worked more closely together than any time in my history. United States Attorney Andy Luger, Susan Seidel, your city attorney and I have worked very closely together. Andy worked with the other county prosecutors. It was a great team, and I'm sorry that Andy's not there. Greg Brooker, the acting, is a good person, but I couldn't ask for a better friend to work on things than Susan. And, I mean, the people expect us to work together. I mean, the sheriff is supposed to work with the chief of Minneapolis Police, and he does, and she does. But this kind of cooperation has been extraordinary, and I thank Susan for her help. Madam Chair, I've taken a lot of your time, but I appreciate it.
We have one more question. I want to make sure, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate all your wisdom and all the time that you've given us, but I was also curious about your thoughts about the issue of sanctuary cities. The city of Minneapolis has a separation ordinance. We have many residents, children, youth, very concerned about the current climate, given the Washington, who's in charge there, or who's the president. And so, and there's also concerns about what happens at the county jail in terms of immigrants who might be held. And I don't know if you have a view or a position on this. My understanding is the county does not have any kind of separation ordinance, yet I'm sure that people aren't asking people questions when they come up in their ambulance in that much as we are. And if there's any wisdom or coordination that we could have so that we can better help our residents all feel safe and have confidence in their law enforcement, I'd appreciate it.
Well, as a private citizen and a voter in Minneapolis, I support councilmember who voted for your sanctuary city positions. That's my private position, which I can share. Okay? As a public official in Hennepin County, I helped the sheriff understand that we could no longer hold peace, people who a bureaucrat from ICE had placed an arbitrary forty-eight-hour hold. What was happening is person be arrested, and today, and is appropriate, all the information about any person arrested, including name, address, date of birth, social security number, and immigration status, if it's known, is sent to Washington. It goes to the FBI, it goes to CIA, and it goes to ICE. That's federal law, that's what happens. That automatically happens with everybody arrested, anywhere in the state of Minnesota and frankly, anywhere in the country that I'm aware of. Okay? I'm not an authority in it. So they have it. So ICE has the names. The question is, the practice in the past had been, if they were held in state custody and after, you know, forty-eight hours, we didn't charge, they had to be released, ICE would call the sheriff's offices and say, hold them for another forty-eight hours, we'll come pick them up. Well, that is unconstitutional, illegal, and wrong, and immoral, in my view. Okay? You can't hold somebody unless a detached magistrate has considered that and decided it. Detached magistrate, meaning a judge, was just wrong. And that's what was being done all over the country. And there were just a few places that were starting to recognize you shouldn't do it. And let me give Rich Stan a credit. He was the president of the National Sheriff's Association at the time, and he didn't want to do this. You know, those law enforcement types, they get them in, they want to hold them. And to his credit, he agreed with me in my legal opinion, and he said, no. That was two years ago. Now, this most recent thing was absurd. It just shows how poorly run ICE is and how a whole bunch of orders coming out of Washington make no sense. Okay? They accused him of letting people go and not telling ICE about these individuals for which their state time was done. At the 2:00 PM when they were released from their state time, guess who met them? The ICE agents. That's all legal because ICE had legitimate holds on them. Okay? And they accused Rich of just letting them out. Well, he didn't, and he embarrassed ICE, and now they've pulled back from that. You know, I think President Obama did it right. That is, we need to focus on folks who have committed violent crimes and who are in this country illegally. That's what our immigration laws ought to be focused upon and not others. And I think what Minneapolis has done is right. I think Rich understands pretty clearly what the law is. I think, as you know, you know members of the county board as well as I do. I think there's a significant number of members on the county board who do not like the orders that are coming out of Washington. The best I can tell, everybody's being very careful to follow the Constitution and the laws of the state and the United States, and I support that. And I'm not going to participate in any sweep of folks who may lack documentation in this country. I will not do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we've talked for a while, but I just did want to highlight two items that maybe hadn't come out as much, but that you did cover. And first, I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging that it's been a difficult few years in our community around issues of policing and that, you know, it's a real thing that not everyone in our community sees a police officer and feels safer. And I think it's important to acknowledge that, and your work to build in that trust and accountability into the system that goes all the way to your office, I think is really important in the work that we're all doing together to build that accountability and trust. So thank you. I also wanted to, I'm glad Councilmember Gordon mentioned our collaborative work as well on youth violence prevention. We have a small program, just like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, but we send basically social workers into hospitals to sit with the, with youth victims of violent crime. These are kids eleven years old, up to twenty-something. One of the young men who was part of that program came to our workers' day, and I asked him, have you ever been to City Hall before? And he said, not this part, because he's been through the other part of our City Hall system, maybe ended up, you know, interacting with your office. He's been in our jail. And he said, this is the only thing that's ever worked for him. He has been in and out of rehab, he's been in and out of our criminal justice system, and he has been given a chance through this small program that we're working together with lots of partners to fund. And I think it's important that, just to, again, kind of highlight and elevate that in Minneapolis, it doesn't, we don't always talk this way, but I think our community's philosophy is that we need to invest in community to give folks the tools they need to make the right choices and not end up in our criminal justice system. And we work together on a lot of things with your office around violence prevention, around re sort of justice, around giving people the opportunity for addiction treatment and services so they can get their life on track and make the right choices. And I think it's really important work and probably the thing that in the end is going to really help continue to reduce crime. So thanks, and if you had any comments about that, I think we'd welcome them, but if not, it's fine.
Madam Chair, Councilmember, if you were a recent immigrant from Somalia, and the only way you knew law enforcement was they knocked on your door and stole your food, raped your daughter, and raised havoc, when a police officer knocks on the door, they're carrying a heavy burden. I understand, we're here to help. We see it in the prosecution world because sometimes people have the courage to talk to the police and they tell them the story. And then we have to tell them, if the case is going to trial, they have to tell it again. And they say, well, why do I have to tell it again? I've already told the police. Well, you have to talk to them about the Eighth Amendment, and you have to talk about the confrontation clause, and all those sort of things are like, that's not how it was back home. And I give credit to a lot of our Somali folks and friends. They've worked really hard to talk about how criminal justice works here and due process, and we do as well. And I'm proud that I hired the first Somali woman lawyer in Minnesota. She's now left and gone on to bigger and better things, but we have Somali lawyers, we have Somali advocates. In the court system, if you're a person that is, you're not a European descent, and you walk into a courtroom and everybody there is from European descent, there's anybody that looks like you at all, that's not very good. So we have prosecutors, and we've increased our number of prosecutors of color from two percent when I arrived in nineteen ninety-one to twenty percent now. Our staff is overall over sixty percent people of color. We have Somalis, we have American Indians. We have the largest number of American Indian lawyers in any law from the state of Minnesota, as we should. You know, we've got the largest group of urban Indians in the country here, at Little Earth and elsewhere. My family are immigrants, too. My great-great-grandfather was a Swede, and he made the mistake of marrying a Norwegian, and you couldn't do that in the old country, and he had to come to this country. Okay? Sewered neighborhood where I grew up has gone in my lifetime from kind of Polish and Eastern European to African-American to Somali, in my lifetime. And that's to a credit to our city, that we can embrace different people. Now, folks have got to follow the law as it is here. You can't have the Klan decide crimes of violence, and we need to work with folks in that, and that's it. But we're a great success story. Now, do we have prejudice? You're damn right we do, and we need to have, do a lot of work on that, too, and we need to understand folks better. Well, you know, I'm really proud to be from the city when I go elsewhere, because on immigration issues and treating people better, not, we're not just not yet better, I'm pretty proud of this, and you all have helped lead the way. And, you know, we've got all sorts of different folks in the legislature and in the county boards and on city councils, and that's good. Sorry about the sermon, but it's Tuesday, isn't it? Tuesday, a holy week, so I had to give a sermon. Sorry. Madam Chair, I really abused your time, but I've enjoyed it a lot, and thank you.
Well, thank you for staying. There were many questions that people had, but says that they're very interested in the partnership that we have with Hennepin County Attorney's Office. I'll say, some of the questions that were top of my mind were asked by others, and I really appreciate you taking the time to visit with us. You know, we have a very special relationship with the county and in particular, a very special relationship with the Hennepin County Attorney's Office. And so, we really appreciate, as you mentioned, that we do have a good relationship, and that's very important to us as well. So thank you very much. And since nothing was submitted, I don't think we have any action to take on that. With that, we turn to reports of committees, first with Community Development Regulatory Services, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services has twelve items we're bringing forward. Item number one is a bond issuance. Item two is a liquor license at the Target store downtown. Item three are some changes at Bar Louis. Item four has to do with allowing a temporary on-sale liquor license for twenty-four-hour periods, two times a year downtown, to celebrate major events. For example, the commemoration of the passing of Prince would allow First Avenue to be open twenty-four hours. Item number five is the liquor business and gambling licenses. Item six are license conditions for the Leaning Tower of Pisa. Seven is development rights at six ninety-five and six ninety-nine Lowry. Item eight is our joint powers agreement with regard to our ESG grant. Item nine is the workforce council contract with Hennepin County. Item ten is a contract with Hennepin County for some job fairs. with Hennepin County. Item 10 is a contract with Hennepin County for some job fairs. Item 11 is probably one of the larger items on our agenda. This is the establishment of the NOAA preservation fund program and guidelines. And item number 12, our environmental grant fund applications for the spring round as well as, then these are grants, I should note, that are only going to be issued by the Met Council and DED. There will be no Hennepin County grant awards this year as a result of all of that money being put into Southwest LRT. So there is no Hennepin County cleanup grant award round this year and for the next four years, I believe. I'm happy to answer questions on items one through 12 for Friday.
Thank you, Councilmember Glidden. I'll maybe just note to you, perhaps we need a better understanding at the city of other funds where we submit grant applications or other things on behalf of housing or community groups that may be affected by some of those decisions. So I'll note that. Next, we have Health, Environment and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, the Health, Environment and Community Engagement Committee is going to be bringing, bringing three things forward, possibly a fourth. The first item is authorizing issuance of our third RFP for community solar garden services. Second is just a license agreement with the schools for school sites in case of health emergencies. Then the third is accepting a grant, a very small grant to cover some costs at our animal care and control area. I also will likely be returning with a substitute motion with regards to the waste tire issue. There was a resolution that we considered and we had a presentation from the park board. I understand the park board will be considering and passing a resolution this afternoon or evening at their meeting. I've met with superintendent and also with the president of the park board about it and will likely come in with a substitute motion on Friday. And I'll try to get that to everybody tomorrow after we see what the park board does. I can stand for questions about it now as well.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report and I will give that. We have two items. The first is approving our contract with Lockridge Brindle now and for federal representation services. And the second is approving an amendment to our 2017 legislative agenda that relates to common sense gun violence prevention initiatives. And I'm not seeing questions on that. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights and Emergency Management with Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We will have two items for approval on Friday. One, the first item is a non-standard form contract with the International Association of Firefighters. And the second is a contract amendment with SMG for bombing 911 dispatcher services at US Bank.
Right, thank you. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding eight items, including the Winter Street Alley construction project approval, license agreement with the Hall and Neare Improvement Association for flood basin planting, rate of way entry for the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services for Fridley Water Plant, agreement with Excel Energy to convert overhead electrical facilities to underground facilities at the location listed. Item five is a memorandum of understanding with Park and Rec for the Minnehaha Creek Watershed Management District for integrated planning processes. Item six is A Street South Reconstruction Project Layout Approval. Seven is the Penn Oliver Concrete Streets Rehabilitation Project and there's an amendment to that project in terms of the time of the, the date. And then also, eight is accepting a little bid for Commercial Asphalt Company for those materials listed. I stand for questions.
All right, thank you. I am not seeing any questions. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have 14 items for consideration on Friday. First is a legal settlement. We also have a Good Works Program donation acceptance for Farmers Market. We also have an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for a new Skyway Bridge. There's a contract amendment with Gunner Electric for a project at the Minneapolis Convention Center, an amendment to a contract with MINDOT for city use of land under highway bridges. Also have the gift acceptance for January and February of 17. Number seven is going to be the bid for roof replacement projects at fire stations 17, 21 and 28. We have also establishing a pool of contracts with selected vendors for human capital consulting services. We have a contract amendment with Halogen for performance management software. This is part of a series of five IT department amendments and contract extensions. As I said, Performance, Perform Minneapolis Software, Shot Spotter, the fingerprint system and city citation issuance and management system, as well as a contract amendment with Safari Books Online. The final item is a collective bargaining agreement, a four-year term with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 70 for stationary engineers. Happy to answer any questions on those 14 items.
Thank you. I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Zoning and Planning with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have six items from zoning and planning. Item number one is planning commission reappointments for five individuals who currently serve on the planning commission. Item number two is rezoning of street and alley vacations for the Minneapolis Public Schools on East Lake Street. Item number three is rezoning at 2700 Cedar Avenue South from R2B to C1 to allow for a contractor's office. Item number four is an alley vacation at the Hennepin County Facility Services Department on Plymouth Avenue North. And item number five is adjusting the board member stipend for the planning commission and zoning board of adjustments. And then item number six is adoption of a resolution that Councilmember Reich are bringing forward, which is the next phase of our comprehensive plan update. And this is adopting draft goals that will guide the rest of the work as we move into the next phase of community engagement between now and 2018 when the plan is adopted.
All right. Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I, there was some significant discussion in committee associated with the report regarding the comprehensive plan, specifically as it related to community groups. And I think there was a conflation between statements that were sort of cold from community input sessions to something that was indicative of where the city was as a matter of policy and priority. And so just by way of clarification, we're going to be adding a statement for Friday, something along the lines of that we will resolve that Minneapolis will have an equitable civic participation system that enfranchises everyone, recognizes the core and vital service of neighborhood groups provided to the city of Minneapolis and builds people's long-term capacity to organize, to improve their lives and their neighborhoods. I hope that makes clarification that clears up the issue that was so confounding just a week ago.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to sort of reiterate that I'm working with Councilmember Reich and Councilmember Gordon as chair of that committee to kind of bring that forward. And I do want to say, you know, I met with staff yesterday and they had a big conference, the Community Connections Conference a couple of weeks ago. And they asked me what they're supposed to do with comments that council members are going to do, disagree with that came out of that, those, those sessions. And so I just, I just want to kind of reiterate that I think it's important for us to maintain our ability to get feedback from community. And I know we won't agree with everything people say and we have this, of course, the resolution. Like I think the good thing about the solution is it's, it's at the policy level, which is where we are kind of most, you know, driving this work and, and really to support and honor the work of staff on nights and weekends and all of the time that people are coming in to give input and really make sure that that people feel confident that when they come to a meeting and spend the whole Saturday at the Community Connections Conference, that they do get a chance to have their comments, you know, reflected in, in the summaries and all of that stuff too. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing further comment. And so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.